All right, it is 4:30. Welcome to all of you that are here. I'd ask that you please join me for a moment of silence and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a roll call, please.
Tom Eggers.
Aye.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Brad Hens.
Here.
Okay, moving on to item two, approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
We now move on to the public forum for any items on or off the agenda. Is there anyone here today that would like to address the console? Anyone listening in by Zoom that would like to address the console? Now is your time. I see no unmuting taking place, so we will move on. All right, then we have the consent agenda. Number of items there. We'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? A roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, we move into the new business of our meeting. First item up is the insurance renewals. Tom, you're with us today. You have a few words for us, I would imagine. Please step forward to the mic. Tom Faust with Perspective Insurance.
Yeah, they went down 50%, I think. Oh, maybe not.
Well, thank you for taking a few minutes to discuss this. In your packet, you should have received some prior information, is that right?
Yes.
Um, I'm here to answer questions and kind of do a quick review of what's going on here. Um, first off, the group health renewal, we had a pleasant surprise, I thought, with a 2.9% rate change, which is probably the lowest in a decade for the city, I believe. And so, as a consequence, um, the city employees would receive the same benefit they have in the past. There should be in that a spreadsheet that talks about that. And so, the benefit to the city employees would stay the same. That health savings account with the qualified high deductible health plan will stay the same with that 4,500 deductible. However, we still have to use Oxyent, that third-party administrator, to buy down uh, the deductible to that level. So if you look at that spreadsheet, you'll see that column C is what the city will be paying for, buying it down to what's in column A. Uh, Oxyent does charge for their services and it's $8.50 per employee per month, which is 25 cents more uh, per employee per month than last year. So we were pleased to see that. I know that brushes across it pretty quick, but any questions on that?
And B.
So that's the health insurance and then uh, Sam and I have met numerous times about uh, the property and casualty insurance, which is with ICAP, the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool. Uh, the city's uh, been in that pool for a number of years. Little bit different rate increase, there is a spreadsheet regarding that as well. Uh, that's about a 13.9% increase. A number of factors, I think, uh, Sam pointed out one, which was the ratio that went through central Iowa, which was basically a hurricane through the middle of Iowa. Was tough on insurance carriers, period. Lots of large losses. And then the cost of reinsurance, the reinsurance premiums are going up uh, really kind of across the board. We're seeing public entity increases uh, just really across the board. So, uh, that 13.9% increase on that. IMWCA, which again is a pool for Iowa municipal workers, it says a 44.1% increase, but that's a little, I'm not saying deceptive, but it needs a little explaining, I think. So Iowa, you start out with a base rate for work comp in Iowa. That's a, when I say base rate, the approved rates that the National Council on Compensation Insurance has January 1st of every year. So those base rates would be where everyone starts. That's the starting point for everybody. So because of IMWCA's pool strength, there's some additional discounts available. So if the city of Sheldon was at Iowa state base rates, the work comp premium would be $117,000. But because of your experience mod, which is .76 this year, and the other IMWCA discounts, the total premium is $49,087, so less than half. So you're paying less than half of Iowa state base rates. So even with that increase, substantially better than Iowa state base rates. I know that was kind of a quick description of that. Any questions on how the work comp is calculated? That experience mod is based on the three-year, a three-year period, not counting the most recent year. If you look at the spreadsheet that I gave, that gave us, I think, a six-year histories, yeah, six-year history of ICAP and IMWCA's rates, you'll see what the total is in the far-right column. You'll see that the overall package, including IMWCA's work comp, is $205,710 this coming year. If you look back over the last six years, the city was paying substantially more than that in 2016, 17 through 2018, 19. Then it took a big dip because of the work comp premium going down. And you can see we're riding that back up again. But I wanted to point out the loss ratio at the bottom of that spreadsheet. Loss ratio has to do with rates. You can see what the ICAP loss ratios are by line of coverage. You can see the general liability loss ratio, the auto liability. And I'd point out the auto physical damage loss ratio is, is pretty substantial. Uh, loss ratio is premium versus claims paid. And that does not count the most recent vehicle loss. So pretty substantial losses there. Loss ratio on the work comp, you can see, was 302% in the last year, so 300% of premium paid was paid out in claims. So because of that, we've, we've seen some increases in premium. Again, we don't like seeing that, but that's just the facts. Any questions on that?
I guess not.
None.
You've done your due diligence here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the city's business and we appreciate that.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, then we would move on then to item B under new business, which is, first item there is to public hearing to, on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city there under.
Mayor, if we could just get a motion to approve the insurance renewals.
Oh, sure. All right.
So moved.
Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right. All right, then let's move on to the public hearing. We'll like to open the public hearing now. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the loan agreement we're talking about in terms of Crossroads North Phase Two? Any comments from you, Sam, regarding this? Okay. Anybody on Zoom listening in that wishes to speak regarding this matter? And again, I'm seeing no activity. Then we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move the close. Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve, close public hearing. Something like that.
I'll support whatever he says.
Something on that order, I see. Make him a good hand.
Very good, roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
And then they will entertain a motion to approve a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Hens.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, then moving on to our second item of a public hearing, which is the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment. Uh, there have been a few changes. Is there anyone here wishes to speak to that? Anyone listening in by Zoom? Again, no activity, so a motion to close that public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
And then I'm just moving on to approve the amendment, entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? Any comments from you, Sam? All right. Roll call, please.
Hens.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Moving right along to the first reading of an ordinance amending the sewer rates effective July 1, 2021. A 3% increase is recommended for our workshop discussion. Any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Todd may want to weigh in on this also. It's been about a year and a half since the last increase and Todd and Angie and I, we'd recommend it to you during the budget that we have a 3% increase uh, to avoid or to help stave off large increases in the future, so.
And this was in, in reference to the uh, kind of the adjusted rate schedule after uh, the engineers kind of realized that maybe they missed a year on.
That was water.
Oh, that was water.
Yeah, this is, this is wastewater, so the, so this was before both of our times when there was, there was a, a large set of rate increases. And so, based on, based on that, we've, and there were, and if you look at the history prior to that, there was a number of years where there won't, weren't any rate increases at all.
Right, okay.
So what we're doing is, is keeping up so that we don't end up with large, hopefully large, avoid large increases in the future.
Got it.
But there will be. When were you thinking we'd have another rate study? Be another few years?
Probably not this fiscal year, but the next one.
22, 23?
Is what I was thinking we would do the next one.
Okay.
We wanted to get through the, the rate increase schedule that was approved through the water rate study. And then once we got there, then we said we would do a joint water and sewer rate study after. We're just trying to do maintenance increases on wastewater to get that.
Okay. Any other questions at this time?
I just support the, the solid strategy to, to do this, so I support it.
So we need a motion then to approve the first reading and move it on to the next one, is that right?
Make the motion to approve the first rate increase.
Support.
And then the next reading would be at our, two weeks, at our next meeting, okay? All right, we have motion and support, we need roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, then let's move on to our update on the aerial fire truck. Who's going to handle that?
I'll start, if that's okay.
Yep.
So thank you, Mayor, so uh, there's been a fair amount that's happened with this and there's a fair amount that still needs to happen. So we're still doing uh, due diligence on whether we end up with uh, recommending to you a new or a, a used vehicle. Uh, we'll tell you that, you know, we're running into some significant difficulties with finding a reasonably priced, uh, used vehicle. And there's also a delay in getting uh, new vehicles too. Uh, ICAP will cover, and Tom was a big help in getting this information for us. They will, they will cover up to a year of rental. And they'll also uh, help cover the, they'll cover the transportation fees uh, to get that, get that vehicle uh, here within the budget that they laid out, which I think was about, was up to $100,000 in cost. So I, I did have a, a conference call yesterday with our grant writer regarding the USDA rural development uh, grant um, that we have applied for. And that's more than just the fire truck that we've applied for. But remember when we first applied for that in January, we were planning on replacing the aerial within the next three to, three to five years. We didn't expect a situation like this. So the recommendation based on that conference call was to, was to drop the application for the aerial from the USDA rural development application. And the reason is, is that any research that we've done on pricing, we'd need to start over to comply with the USDA rules. The most we could get um, and from USDA for the aerial anyway, not to minimize the amount because it's still real money, but the most that we could get uh, would, would be uh, basically $35,000. So um, it's, it's, it's not, it's not, to me that we'd, to me it'd be better to pursue the USDA rural development money for, for one of the other projects. I think the language actually was, was uh, it's 50,000, do you remember what the language was? It was something like 50, $50,000 or um, it was a percentage and it, it was up to $50,000 or $35,000, which.
I read the 50, but I didn't, I don't know.
It's 35 to 50 is what we would, what we would get. So it's um, it's much less than what we originally thought we could receive from rural development when we started the, the process. Uh, but we still have the, overall, we still have the potential opportunity on the other package to receive 28% or $226,250 out of a nearly $800,000 package. So it's still, still worth pursuing, but would not include uh, the aerial. So regarding the aerial, um, there, um, there are funding mechanisms that we're exploring that would include general obligation bonding, it can include participation from the State Fire Marshal Training Bureau, they have some funds available. Uh, it could also include some level of participation from the, 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 the city's new fire department depreciation or capital improvements fund. And of course, then it would include approximately $180,000 that we'd be receiving from the insurance settlement, which is already in the bank. Any questions?
Yeah, in regards to the adjustment uh, that you just outlined on the USDA, is that something that we can resubmit next year for?
We can.
With the, with the aerial being the main focus?
Well, no, not if we buy an aerial, not if we buy an aerial this year. So they, we just.
Correct, if, if we were to purchase a used one and have it in, have it in our possession by that time, I understand that. But if by chance we should go new, we won't have it in our possession.
But we.
Within, you know, it'll be at least a year before it's in our possession.
I think what you're saying is we have to have the paperwork all done before we start the process.
Yeah, what I'm saying is if you receive any, if you receive rural development money, the whole project needs to be in compliance with rural development rules, which requires all of your, it requires three quotes and it requires, um, basically requires the research, the research to, to not start until the, or the, getting the quotes not start until you've gotten approval from USDA, so.
So a delay of a whole year.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it, it doesn't make sense to, and, and especially, Tom, when we're, when we'd only get 30, 35 to 50,000 dollars on, on a rig that could cost 550,000 to a million, it wouldn't make sense, it wouldn't make sense to delay the whole process when there's other projects that that money could be used for.
The timetable helps clarify that for me, thank you. And just clarification on the insurance coverage for the gap that we're proposing to use to rent. The cap on that is $100,000.
It is.
Okay.
And do we know approximately how long that would cover? Like how long we'd actually have the truck for $100,000?
That would get us a year.
Be about a year.
Yeah, a little less than a year. It's $350 a day.
Or 10.5 a month?
Yeah, 10, 14, no. I don't know. Yes, 10.5, a 30-day month.
Yeah.
So, in reality.
Yeah, I think Chuck may have a little bit more information on that in talking with Jeremy from Brindley Mountain.
So Jeremy from Brindley Mountain actually had a conversation. They can extend that contract out for a year with that same pricing. Their normal pricing is their $350 a day, but they think they can stretch that out for one whole year with that same $100,000 cap, so.
Oh, so what you're saying is $100,000 would cover us for 12 months?
Yep.
Would get us from a year from?
From the date we get it.
And including the delivery and all that stuff.
I believe that's the way it's set up, is the delivery and the return is part of that uh, that $100,000.
Oh, okay.
So.
That tightened set up quite a bit, that's good.
Yeah.
Good.
Good company to deal with.
Good negotiation on that.
If we were to lease this rig for a year, are you interested in having it beyond, could you rent to own it, so to speak?
I don't believe they do that at all with those trucks. So they've got two or three trucks that they rent and that's all they do with those, so I don't think they have any rent to, to own programs.
Chuck, I know you've been involved in this process pretty heavily from the beginning. What are the odds we get this done in a year?
As far as a truck?
Yeah.
That all depends on if you go new or used. Used is, you know, if you had one today that you liked and picked out, you're still talking four months down the road. Um, a new truck from the day is a year out as well, so there's no quick, quick response to that, so. It's a hard market right now, that used market is absolutely brutal, so. There's older trucks out there. Um, there's some newer trucks out there that just don't fit where you're at and you're still, you're still talking $600,000 by the time you find a truck and that's, that truck's not necessarily the best truck either. It doesn't have the hose loads that you're looking for, for safety. It doesn't have the motor that you're looking for, for longevity and things like that, but yeah, it's not a, not a quick process, no matter which way you go. So we're hoping that one-year lease, you know, at least be a stopgap for now while we've got some coverage in town, while we work through the whole, whole process.
Well, that's all I got, thank you, Chuck.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm going to ask this question, I don't want it to be interpreted the wrong way, but is this something we need or is it something we want? Do we need a ladder truck? Because I've heard that question asked.
Certainly. You know, uh, we go back to the first aerial we purchased was a really, really old unit we bought from Minnesota. And that one we used just for big city calls. You know, when we had a downtown fire, things like that. When we purchased the second one, we found it used. Jerry Meyer and I went out and looked at it. And while we were out there looking at the truck, we responded to a fire call with the fire chief of the company that we were purchasing the truck from. And when we were there, they, they had a fire on a split-level house that had extended from the driveway up the, from the garage up the front of the house. And they were setting a ladder up to work on it. And the fire chief at that point, the other fire chief that was on scene, turned and said, "Hey, spin the aerial around." And I looked at Jerry Meyer and said, "Wow, it looks like overkill," you know? And the fire chief in charge of that scene turned to me and said, "It wouldn't be if somebody fell." So that's kind of where we're at and how we use our truck now. We don't see contractors working off ladders much anymore. So when we're out working on a fire, we use the aerial instead of putting people at risk. So we're trying to ventilate roofs with people on the aerial. We're trying to pull siding and work with the aerial instead. And once we've had that tool and we realize the safety and the benefit of safety for that, really hate to go backwards and not have that. We've had some large elevator fires that we've applied foam at. I was just on the phone today with a gentleman in Jefferson, Iowa, concerned of how they were going to get water applied to a fire on an elevator they have down there and I said, "Use your aerial, we don't have one."
You're talking a green elevator.
A green elevator fire, correct. So, you know, we've used it at the ethanol plant, we've used it in a lot of different calls that without that tool, we would have put our people at risk. And that's, that's really, I don't want to go backwards on that. You know, when you talk with Tom about the insurance expenses of the mod rate of our, of things like that, you know, if somebody's going to fall, what that's going to do to our insurance as we move forward, it's just a tool for safety. It really is. And yeah, I'd hate to not have that tool anymore, so.
That's good information, for the community to know.
Yeah, last year, from when we serviced them, I believe, Chuck, you said September?
Yep.
Till the truck left, we had put 25 hours on that truck. And it went to, I bet you, a handful of structure fires here in town that we used it on.
Right.
And I know, you know, when you look at contractors now working, you see people working off high lifts, you see people working off man lifts. You know, when I worked construction as an electrician, we didn't have a man lift. We had, we had scaffolding. And we were climbing up and down off scaffolding all the time. My brother went over on a piece of scaffolding one time, you know, and I think now you just don't see anybody working that way anymore. It's taken a while for the fire service to catch up with that. You know, we, we fall back on tradition and how we always used to do things. That's a, that's a tool that prevents falls, it really does. And, well, that's really, that's really one of the key elements of that device for us.
Could you put into context the pump capacity that the pump on the aerial provides the department?
Certainly. The, the truck that we had before was a 1,250 gallon per minute pumper and that would really be the minimum we would want to have. Um, and it, it goes with the water supply that we have too. There's a lot of things when we look at an insurance operation of that. We need to make sure we have a certain pumping capacity. Ideally, we'd want a little bit bigger pump, if we could. As we relay water from one location to another, it, it takes, it takes a lot of pumping capacity to do that. I know, trying to explain how much water it takes to put out a fire is a little bit mind-boggling to most people, but 2,000 gallons per minute is, is what we may be applying to a fire. The recent call in Sibley, you know, we, we'd calculated for 1,000 gallons per minute and it was going to take three trucks to get that water from their nearest hydrant to the actual location of the fire itself. And it would have taken three trucks with that capability, so.
So that truck has more, more value than just the aerial.
Oh, certainly.
It has the pump capacity, which is important for the services.
You know, um, we would call it an aerial, uh, but that truck is going to carry hose on it. Uh, one of the difference between the used trucks and the newer trucks, we've had close calls with that truck with people loading hose on it because they stand on top of the truck. One of the features we're looking at on a, on a new option, and if we could find something that was used that way too, they have hydraulic systems that come out, so you're standing on the ground loading the hose. Um, so that's, that's a good feature there. So it carries hose, it carries tools on it, it carries a generator or the capability of creating electricity for lighting. Um, it also, this one would have water on it. We'd hope to find one that carries a little bit of water on it as well. With the pump and then manpower that's carried with it as well.
Yeah, I just want us to understand that this is, this is more than just a single knife. It's actually, it's got multiple.
Swiss Army truck.
Swiss Army truck, yeah, Swiss Army aerial truck type of deal.
There are, there are departments that, that are capable, they just use the aerial only, they don't put a pump on it. It's just an aerial. Um, we don't have the space to do that. Our, ours does have to be a, a Swiss Army knife, as you put it.
So it has, it has application on a fire that may not need the aerial, but still needs the pump.
Certainly, and it, it still carries ladders on it because in some situations, you just have no choice. You still have to work off the ladders. If you can, if you can use the aerial, it's better. But, you know, and ventilation equipment, other things. It's got a nozzle on the end of it, that's the one you see, uh, the big pictures, you know, of, of the truck up in the air spraying the water. I think it was posted in the newspaper when they went down to Brindley Mountain and looked at that truck too, you know? Being able to put water from above down is a good option on, you know, particularly downtown fire. We've, we've had some of those. And again, the elevator, the ethanol plant, you know, it's just a, it's an option that's not there if we don't have that tool, so.
Scott, how do we, uh, you know, in trying to justify the, the purchase of this, how does Sheldon rank versus other towns of? does Sheldon rank versus other towns of similar size? Do other towns in that 5,000, uh, population range, do they have aerials, or are we, uh, are we unique?
No, we're not unique in that at all.
Okay.
There's a lot of towns, you know, I, I live in Ankeny, Iowa, in that area, and a lot of the towns around that area, the little towns of 1,200, have small aerials at that point, too. So it's not, it's not unique to have aerials. Of course, the larger communities in our area, which we would be included with that, you know, the Sioux Center, Lamar, Spencer, and I realize they're a little bigger than us, but they have devices similar to this as well, um, Worthington, Minnesota. Worthington, Minnesota did purchase a used one and it's been in the shop a lot since they purchased it, too, so. And when we go back in time, the amount we spent on that truck, we said, we approached, I think, three years before, we were planning on replacing it, wasn't it, Brad?
Yeah.
And we said, "We're, we're watching the market, and we've never seen a better market for a used truck." And Scott Winia was the one that said, "You know, I think if we didn't purchase this truck, we might be making a mistake." And I wish we could go back in time into that market and find those trucks, they're just not there, so.
And, uh, you brought up, like, the ethanol plant, for example, so when you roll the aerial, are you charging any different, uh, as far as the use of, of, of a big piece of equipment like, like the, the aerial versus, you know, just a traditional manpower, um-
You know?
Yes.
Yeah, there is, there is an additional fee, and Brad can probably-
Yeah, we have a structure of, and we approved it several, a few months back, of what we charge for fires, um, both rural and in-town. So we do have a, a, a structure for that. It's different, different trucks classified at different rates. The ladder truck and the main engine would be a, um, heavy response. So any, my rule of thumb when I do the, the billing towards the city, anything that pumped on scene is classified heavy response. If we use the truck and we just use the equipment off of it, then I would fall that into a light response.
Okay.
So, and it's all billed by per hour, um, and that, so we do receive some funds from that.
Cause I, I, you know, one of the things that I had heard, um, in, in this discussion is, you know, well, why do the citizens of Sheldon have to bear the burden of this truck to be used as a regional, uh, type apparatus, so?
Yeah, so when we do, yeah, we will have a bill.
Yeah. You know, and it's, it's hard because if we have a rural call, we're going to mutually, the smaller towns by us are heavier with tankers, and their tankers were 300 to 350,000. I can't remember what, Sandmore just had to replace their tanker because of an accident. They don't, they don't complain when they come with help us, so we try to return the favor with manpower and equipment. You know, it's, it's, it's mutual, it's part of being, part of this community.
Sure.
And I understand and feel completely about bearing the burden of that. We also bear the burden of the additional training with the larger department. We also have a lower insurance rating because of the training and the equipment requirements and things like that, and it's, you know, it's quite a, it's quite a burden on the volunteers that we have to get that done, but, you know, they're proud to do it, so, yeah.
And I think that's one area where we're very blessed, is that, uh, there is such that sense of call to duty and, and service, and, and we surely appreciate that. I just worry that, um, you know, that we look at the, we can balance out the liability standpoint, you know, for the, the reason that we're in this particular position, because, you know, the, the truck was totaled out, so I, I guess, you know, with, you know, and Tom's kind of talked to this a little bit, but just making sure that we are, uh, we are appropriately covered and, uh, that we're, while we do provide this service and we are looking to help out our, our fellow man, that, but we're doing right by our citizens as well.
Certainly. Completely understand and support that. It's not our truck, it's the city's truck, so, you know, we appreciate the, the respect that we're given to take care of that stuff, too, and we-
Anything else? Thank you, Scott, for stepping forward.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks to all you guys-
Good decision made.
For being here today, as well as your service, we appreciate it, so we're going to see what we can do.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, one, one final note to remember is that several years ago, there was, uh, one of our, one or two of our rural townships were paying roughly $150 a section, and now their minimum township fee is $650 a section. So, one of the ways that Brad and I were able to market, uh, the new agreements, uh, was the presence of the equipment that we have, including the, the aerial for barn and silo and elevator fires. As far as the approval, if you approve the resolution, uh, today, uh, if you look at, if you look at section two in the resolution that, or in the agreement that's, that's linked, I would like to have the flexibility, if you make the motion to approve, to have the flexibility to, uh, for Fire Department and I to negotiate the, the final terms without bringing it, um, uh, back, uh, for, um, in two weeks, so that we can move forward with the, uh, with the rental, if you're okay with that, because section two doesn't quite match up with, uh, with, with what, uh, the salesperson had told Chuck, so we wanted, we wanted to see, see how close we can get to that and, and then move, uh, and then move forward.
And the other note on that is, as soon as we, we approve it, then they'll get it into their shop, because it has to have some minor repair work, and then the sooner it can get up to us, so. It's one of the other reasons we'd like to do that, to keep the, the ball rolling.
How soon do you think we'd have it?
I would say probably a couple weeks.
Nope.
Yeah.
I think once it hits their shop and it's done there, I think it'll be on the road, don't you, Chuck, the way it sounds?
Yeah, it's only going to take two to three.
Yeah.
But I'm certainly encouraged by Chuck's comments in regards to the conversations he's had with Brindle, or Brindley Mountain in this, and I would assume that, uh, the final negotiation will be close to that number or that agreement, so with that, I would have no problem with it. If it was, if by chance it grew for some unexpected reason, I'd like to, you know, have the option of whether or not we need to review it then at that point or not, so.
I would say, uh, if I might, I would say if it grows beyond what's written down now, then I think I should come back to you.
That's my point.
But if it, if it lasts like 10 months, but if it's, you know, let's say, a, a year, but then we have the transportation fees that we would, uh, have to pay, then I'd say we could, we'll do the best we can, but we'd go ahead and approve it, but if it's more than, than this, then I think I should come back.
That's what I was thinking, so.
So is that, you're going to phrase it in the form of a motion? Are you ready to do that, approving that resolution?
So basically, the motion would be is that we would, uh, approve moving forward, uh, with the negotiation and final, uh, lease agreement with, uh, Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus, uh, as long as the, uh, total costs don't exceed, uh, what the current lease agreement shows. Does that cover it?
Okay. Do we have support for that? Support. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
All right, moving on to our report section. Sam, is there anything else you'd like to address us with tonight?
Uh, the only thing, uh, is that we, uh, staff discussed today that, um, starting in a few weeks, we can resume the old seating arrangement that we, uh, that we had, had before. I think we're getting, you know, close to normal again.
Okay.
We'd like to do that, starting at the next meeting.
Good. All right, Todd, anything from you?[1730.84]